You're right on time, Mr. Walker.
The gavel's about to fall.
Well, you know, tonight, last night, tonight, it's...
The tempers had a phone call for...
Of course, we have meetings when there's a beautiful night out.
Oh, yeah.
Can we just... Last night I said, can we just sit outside? Can we just sit outside?
It's nice.
Also, I will... After the regular meeting, I'm skipping out early. Hope you don't mind.
Do we have a workshop?
Just a workshop part of it.
It should be brief because Karen's not here to talk about private roads.
Yeah, I've got that one.
And all I'm gonna do is talk to y'all about where we are with all these items. There's nothing to give you, nothing really to do, other than the accessory dwelling unit. We found a discrepancy in two places in the zoning ordinance. So the question becomes, do you want us to bring these individually to you or try to group these things that we find and bring them at one time?
Working.
Because we found the accessory dwelling unit, there's one place where it says it needs to be 50 percent of the house, and in the U standards, it says 35 percent.
I said I need the second one treated. Second one treated was a year this time.
No idea.
At the last...
RC, yeah, RC District, we don't allow single-family residential in the RC District.
Ooh, hang on, get that.
So, maybe we did that on purpose.
I'd like to call the May 5th commission meeting to water. Mr. Ayers, you'd lead us in the indication. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in Palatán, and we ask your guidance tonight as we seek to do the people's business. Amen.
Amen.
April 7th meeting minutes, does anybody have any comments, concerns, elected voice?
If not, I'm...
Move for approval as submitted.
Sex.
All approved. Aye. Administrative items.
You have your monthly report in the agenda. I would like to report out on at least two items last night from the board meeting. The board took up the public hearing for the conditional use permit for Easter for their in-law, the living... They approved that on a 5-o vote with no discussion. They also approved the zoning ordinance amendment for the 7-11 district overlay that we deleted and moved everything around. Only had one question from that, and then they approved that 5-o. And then subdivision ordinance, well, that's to be continued. We had, well, really, no discussion, other than they had held a public hearing and allowed the public to comment. We are scheduled to discuss it in depth, go through that laundry list of items that I have at the May 18th workshop, at which time we'll talk... That's when Karen's supposed to come, Scornick's supposed to come and give the report that y'all did way back in December on private roads. And then we'll talk about the subdivision ordinance hopefully that night and get that done. But we conducted the public hearing, took no action, deferred action to a later date. So, we'll see. One day we'll get it, we'll get it done. But the good thing is, the ordinance we have works, so we're okay.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
What sort of comments did you get from the public?
We have, well, I got comments in from really development, engineering, surveying community regarding some of the requirements in the proposed ordinance. Some of those requirements, however, are found in the current ordinance. The majority of them are there. The comments that we've received, and also from board members, boil down to really four big items. How do we treat large lot development? Currently, the subdivision ordinance exempts... It doesn't consider large lot development a subdivision. There's a definition of subdivision exemption, and that's one of them. The proposed ordinance doesn't exempt it, so it has to comply with all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, whereas now it doesn't. Flag lots is an issue, and then the whole flag lot piece comes into play, is if they do away with flag lots, then we have all the language for family... Family divisions, I think you have to... That stays the way it is, and there's nothing you're gonna do about that. But then you have the single cuts, the charitable's, which all allow 30-foot easement or flag. All that would have to be changed, and you'd have to comply with the lot width requirement of the zoning district in the ag area 210 or 15 feet. So, that's an issue. Those are kind of the two biggies. Then we also have a discussion of access management, pavement standard, my...
Trash receptacles.
Trash receptacles, requirement of trash receptacles in all developments. The requirement, and this kind of goes along with the large lot piece, we require the undergrounding of all utilities. Well, if you have a subdivision of the 10 or 20-acre lots, there's a discussion that they shouldn't have to be underground utilities because of the cost involved and the size of the lots and whatnot. So, the large lot, how you handle that, I think, then dictates how some things fall out. If the board determines to provide the exemption it's providing now, a lot of those things that are on the table go away. One of the requirements of all development in the proposed ordinance is you have to delineate wetlands. Well, if you have someone that's just cutting off a 20-acre piece of their land, you'd have to delineate wetlands, and there's a feeling that they shouldn't have to do that for a single cut of a large lot. So there's a lot of that that really teeters on how you treat large lot development, and then a lot of dominos fall one way or the other. I can get y'all the list. I've been keeping a running list of all the comments made. I can email that out and get Mr. Walker a copy, just so y'all know what's happening. And if you go, that list is actually in the board packet, last night's board packet, if you have some desire to run home tonight and take a look, but we'll get it out to you. Those are really a lot of the comments, really questions that came up, why is this, why are we doing this? When you go back into the current ordinance, you can find verbatim language. So there's a lot of my comments that say, language in both current and proposed ordinance, staff recommends leaving it alone. So...
Thank you.
But the biggies, we got a couple of biggies that they have to deal with. Oh, and private roads. And once that happens, then I think a lot of things kind of fall out from there. When that happens, I'm not sure. Stay tuned.
That's a long to-do list, doing one workshop.
Well, I think we have 50, 55 or 4... 55, 54 comments. So I want to go by each one of them and get a yea or nay, because what happens is Linda in Tom's office has to do, like she did with the zoning ordinance, go in and make all of those changes. And I don't want to make changes and then constantly be going back and forth making changes. I want, let's go through it all, agree on what we want, make the changes one time, because what's gonna happen unfortunately, she goes in, as soon as she starts making changes in formatting, the whole formatting goes crazy because of the way that our good friend set the document up. So we want to avoid that as much as possible and limit her frustration as much as possible because she's doing a really good favor for us. So, trying to get that done, and hopefully we'll have, make some headway on that on May 18th.
Anything else, Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, this time we'd like to open the floor to anyone who has comments regarding something not on the agenda. Anyone like to come forward? If not, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Altman, as far as rezoning 1501.
So I have to say that I apologize. I have a PowerPoint there at your place, made a copy of it for everybody, and then left the thumb drive sitting in my computer back up the road, so we don't have it this evening. I think I have some extra copies, if anybody in the audience would like them. So unfortunately, I will apologize in advance for, it still feels like Monday to me, so...
Well, I understand y'all had a long meeting last night.
Yes, sir. I'm thinking that there's someplace in here where I can put a cot, just take a nap or something at some point in time. So I'm gonna run through the PowerPoint real quickly for you. This evening, you have a request submitted by W. Michael Potter for the, what we were determining, the Aaron Hill development, for the rezoning of 3840, 3844, Old Buckingham Road, and 3825 and 3833 Yates Lane, to rezone approximately 13 acres of land. There are approximately seven parcels in that 13 acres, from C Commercial and A10 Agricultural to the VCPD, which is our Village Center Plan Development District with proper conditions. The property is located along Old Buckingham Road in the Palatán Courthouse, Mount Zion Election District, and we have a public hearing required. You have a similar map in your staff report showing the subject property, the zoning map showing the adjoining zonings. We have A10 on the county property to the south and to, well, to the east and to the north. Also, to the south is A10, and then you have, across Yates Lane is the courthouse zoning district. We have the piece of A10 in the middle of the two C properties for rezoning. Then I have some photographs of just some views of the property from Old Buckingham, looking back up Old Buckingham Road, showing the Mabels' site, which is part of the rezoning. But Mabels and Aaron Hill, which are part of the rezoning, we wanted to make sure that the whole area was consistent with our comp plan with the rezoning. They're part of the rezoning, but they're not gonna be redeveloped in the sense that they're coming down, Aaron's will become a standalone, single-family dwelling, and then Mabels will continue to operate as a commercial endeavor on its current site. Just a view looking up from, into the site, from the intersection of Yates and Old Buckingham, looking down Yates Lane, as on the next page, one of the homes involved in the property on Yates Lane. And then the last, well, the second to last slide is a view looking east from Yates into the property where the second tie would be back out to Yates Lane from the property. The development proposal has two points of access. It's only a 40-lot development proposal. Our ordinance requires two points of access for 50 or more, but the developers providing two points of access regardless of that requirement. And then the last is just a picture of Aaron Hill. Case overview, the development proposal is for 40 new residential units, 33 single-family and seven townhouse units. The zoning district, the Village Center Plan District allows for a density of a minimum of four acres per unit up to a maximum of eight acres per unit. The proposed density of the rezoning request is 4.43 acres per unit.
Those are units per acre.
Units per acre, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. And, like I said, it's still Monday.
That's all right.
The single-family, the proposed single-family dwellings are, start, range from 2,000 to 3,000 square foot, and the townhomes are proposed at 1,300 to 1,800 square foot. Aaron Hill will be sold as out parcel as a single-family dwelling, and Mabels will remain as a commercial out parcel. The development will have two points of access, one on the Old Buckingham and one on the Yates Lane. We looked at the, the subdivision ordinance discusses the need or requirement for a traffic impact analysis, which is at a number, if we have the number of new peak vehicle hour trips, more than 100, this one, this proposal has numbers, less than 100, so TIA wasn't required. The development will be served by well, deep well, from, through the Aqua or Virginia system, and also be served by the county's wastewater system. And all of those infrastructure requirements will be built to the design requirements of both Aqua and the county. Looking at potential school impact on the property, I ran some numbers and had the numbers verified by the school system. They have, actually have a formula. Look, and what we did was we looked at the number of units and looked at the average family size in Palatán, which is 3.02, and I made an assumption, whether it's right or wrong, that a lot of these, the majority of the households or the families in Palatán are two-family, two-parent households. Using that, multiplying the number of houses, units by 1.02, you get 41 new potential new students of that, and taking that number and looking at the current population, school population, and taking that and breaking it down by the percentage of the student population enrollment by grade level, those brackets, we get 14, potentially 14 students in the K through 4, 6 and 5 and 6 grades, 7 and 7th and 8th grade, and another 14 students that would be in the high school at 9 through 12. Looking at the following page gives us an illustration of the proposed development proposal for Aaron Hill development with the access points, and it's note, you note that Aaron Hill, it's proper and Mabels are highlighted, so that, showing that they're not part of the redevelopment of the site, but they're gonna stay existing parcels. We have an existing buffer along the east side of the property, or north side of the property, some planted buffer along the east side, and existing buffer there along the county admin building. And the buffers would really be buffering up to the county property, and at the north side, or north would be the ball fields behind the county. The following page gives you an illustration of the street section of the homes, the single-family homes, and of the townhomes in the development. And then the comprehensive plan review, the subject property shown as village center and village residential in the 2010 countywide land use map. And the rezoning request is in general accord with the following from the 2010 comprehensive land use plan. The courthouse village special area plan, the village center land use policies, the land use goals regarding directing growth in the three village areas, and the housing goals discussing a diverse range of housing offerings in the county. Comments and concerns expressed by reviewing agencies, VDOT, as you have in your, in the packet, as part of your packet, their comments. Generally, VDOT did not have any objection to proposal, although there was some discussion of the access point along Old Buckingham Road. However, there is a discussion that if you moved that 25 mile an hour speed limit sign from where it is now near Mabels, up to, closer to the roundabout or east of the roundabout, then it could alleviate some of the concern that VDOT has. Public safety comments by our fire department, center around address numbers, street signs, fire hydrants, and the potential to need to maybe readdress Aaron Hill, that property itself. And then Public Works, their comments revolved around the project connection to the county water system and providing a 20-foot utility easement.
West water.
And then the environmental comments were to incorporate low-impact design strategies to reduce stormwater runoff. Some of these comments are really probably more site plan review type comments, as opposed to having a substantial impact on the rezoning case itself. Needless to say, some of it will be worked through in that review process when we get to that point in time. You have a revised set of proffers in front of you that were submitted today at your seat. The proffers in general, in summary, offer the proffering, the textual statement as submitted, which you have in your staff report, the conceptual development plan as submitted, the conceptual building elevations as submitted, proffering a maximum of 40 new residential units, Yates Lane improvements adjacent to the development, streetlights, the pedestrian style streetlights along the sidewalk on Old Buckingham from Yates Lane to the roundabout, the roads would be VDOT standard roads, so they could be accepted into the system, sidewalks along the roads in the interior portion of the property, the proffering setbacks. The planned district doesn't have prescribed setbacks. The setbacks are set by the concept plan. So the setbacks are proposed as 10-foot on the front, one foot on the side with 10-foot minimum between the houses, 10-foot on the rear, and a 3-foot accessory building rear setback. And these are the same setbacks that were proposed and used in Scottville. And then the applicant is proffering to pay the cash proffer for the public safety, library, park, and recreation and public works, which, using our current cash proffer policy, which was adopted in 2010, that would be $1,738 per residential unit.
May I ask a question, just before I have it, on the proffers, because we're getting these tonight?
Mm-hmm.
You gotta make a... What has changed since we received these proffers a week ago? That was one of my questions as well.
What has changed is the conceptual plan, the textual statement, the maximum number of residential units. Those were added by the applicant since he received it in your packet.
Thank you. Yeah, I have some additional questions on that, but get to that later. Do you have anything else?
Other than staff is recommending approval of the proposal with these...
Is there anybody with the developer that would like to present or talk about this rezoning case? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Michael Potter, and we're proud to be here tonight, and we feel like we have a wonderful project in addition to our home here in Palatán Courthouse. I really appreciate everyone's time, both the staff, Mr. Howland and March, and the time they've put into it, and also the members of the planning commission. I really, this opportunity came up, the temples who owned Aaron Hill for 16 years, wonderful persons, in fact, Ms. Jean, as we commonly call her, kept our son when he was an infant. So William still looks in the closet looking for his toys, even though he's, will be 15 this year. But what it brings, what it brings to my attention, and of course, and all the energies that we put into the courthouse, is about how do we make Aaron Hill continue to thrive as an older home? And we're proud to say tonight that we have a wonderful Palatán family that's given us a verbal commitment to want to be a part of this and live in the older home and purchase it. And they find it incredibly exciting to them that they're gonna have 40 wonderful neighbors like kind and quality. And people are looking for that. I don't know if many of you, hopefully, visit the village often in the evenings, but the village is alive, and people are looking and using the sidewalks and using our facilities here in the courthouse, and they enjoy every piece of that, and I know my family and I do as well. So with that, this gives us an incredible opportunity to share, share the wealth of the village. And, you know, my favorite quote, and I think I shared it in the text, was I had a friend of ours came to me, more of acquaintance, a friend came to me and said, "Michael, we're gonna move, we're gonna create ourselves a fake ID, and we're gonna move to Scottville. We want that feel." They're recent empty nesters, their son's, I think, is a freshman now at Hampton Sydney, so they don't have children, but yet they aren't of qualifying age to move to Scottville, and they enjoy going to Hampton Sydney to watch their son play ball, and they don't want those yard commitments and those pieces and parts that come along with residing in Palatán. So with that, I'm sure maybe you have some questions, I'd be happy to answer, or if that's the appropriate time. I'm not running this meeting.
Probably after you're in a public hearing, it'd be a better time to do that, that's okay.
Thank you.
If that, I'd like to open up for public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this rezoning, please step forward, give your name, address, if you'd like to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Would anybody like to start, Mr. Ayers? If you'd like me to, I will. Certainly. I'm gonna make some references back to the zoning ordinance, I don't know if y'all have your copies of it or not, but this is a new thing for us.
Yep.
This planned development concept, and it was just incorporated into the zoning ordinance within the last year. So I had some questions about how this application does what the zoning ordinance says it's supposed to do. Which page, Richard? I'm on page 129 right now, the general standards for all planned development districts. And there's a thing called the PD plan. The Planned Development Master Plan, it's referred to in other places. And I'm not sure what constitutes the PD master plan in what we have in our packets. We have a conceptual plan of what the development's gonna look like, and we have some proffers, and we have some discussion of the requirements of a PD plan. There are a few things, however, that aren't in the staff report or the applicant's letter that I think are required, according to the zoning ordinance, of a PD plan. One in particular is identify the general location of onsite stormwater management facilities and how they will connect to county systems. I don't think I read anything in there about stormwater management at all. Other than low impact. Well, that was the staff recommendation, not a part of the developer's plan. I'm gonna skip around a little bit, if you don't mind, unless you have...
No, no, no.
Go ahead. Page 286.
Just keep me up with you, that's all.
286 in the zoning ordinance.
Sorry, what page?
286. We're in open space set-asides on the previous page. Open space set-aside standards, amount of space set-aside required. And in 2, at the top of page 286, it says, "Features and areas identified in table, whatever, open space set-aside features shall be credited towards..." Oh, I'm sorry. B, ahead of that, "Development of village center, commerce center, planned developments or commerce center planned developments, district shall set aside at least 15 percent of the area of the development as an open space set-aside." And I think that, in my crude math, comes out to about 2 acres, and I'm not sure that there is certainty that the application has met that 15 percent set-aside requirement. Back on page 129, there's something about dimensions of...
Something about dimensions?
Sorry, yeah. Page 131, maybe that's where it is. Dimensional standards. The dimensional standards applicable in each development area of PD district shall be established in the PD plan. And in the part of the ordinance that says, "What are the requirements of a VCPD?", it says, "To be..."
Right.
"...written in the PD plan." I'm not sure. We have this in this plan. We have maximum dwellage per unit, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, maximum impervious surface area, maximum building height, maximum individual building size, minimum and maximum yard depths or setbacks, minimum buffers or setbacks for adjoining residential. Some, but not all of this, I think. And that's in detail on page 137. Just go back there. You'll see these things, floor area, lot area, lot width, all of those are supposed to be established in the PD plan. Access and circulation, sustainable design. And then we have all these other master plans that are for parking, landscaping, fencing, lighting, and signage, which I'm assuming could be put off until site plan approval, but there are some elements of what's called a PD plan that we don't have, I think.
Okay.
There's another document that's included in this process that's called the PD Terms and Conditions, on page 130. And I know the applicant has proffered a lot of things, that he's going to do some improvements and that sort of thing. But it seems to me that... Well, I have a question, I guess. Who is responsible for the terms and conditions? Is it the applicant, or is it the planning commission and the board supervisors? It seems to me that some of these are things more related to what we want the applicant to do in the process of this rezoning than they are what the applicant's willing to do for the county during this rezoning process. If you look at page 31, number 6, where you were just at, it says, "Any other provisions the board supervisors determine..." Are relevant and necessary to the development of the PD in accordance with the standards required of this chapter.
So it's putting some of it on the board.
Yes, it is. It is. And it seems to me that if you go back to page 31, I told y'all I was gonna be jumping back. 131?
31.
31. We're back in the... We're back in the procedures section now. Under application, submittal, and acceptance, number four says, "The application shall also include a terms and conditions document." Which, you know, it looks like, the way it's written, it seems that the applicant may draft a terms and conditions document, but that the planning commission and board supervisors have the ability to amend that or add to it over the course of the rezoning process.
Also requires a neighborhood meeting.
It does require a neighborhood meeting. There are some things in that section two or article two that we don't have record of them having been performed according to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And as outside of process, I'd just like to make a comment that I think because of the demonstrated potential impact on schools, that this application should include the full county proppers rather than a limited number of county proppers. The impact on the county from this project is going to be felt in all of the areas that we need to have capital improvements in, and I think the applicant should pay the full cash proffer expectation. That's all, Hannah, thank you.
Mr. Ayers, with what you've taken us through in terms of the planned development process and the PD documents, are you comfortable with the amount of information we have?
No, I'm not.
Having gone through this, I'm not either, okay? And like I thought, I don't know how the rest of y'all feel, is it a deferral for thirty days might be in order?
I agree.
Well, if we're going to do that or if we're going to discuss doing that, I'd like to... If there's anything else we'd like to put out on the table, we probably should do that. So in thirty days, we're not back here again.
I want to question the numbers on the children, school children per household. We've been through this thing before. It doesn't figure out to be a one child. In the period of time we did residential rezonings, it comes out to be just a little bit more than point five child.
Right. If you use the average household size, that's two point seven. So you could say point seven would be the number of children. I looked at family information, I used average family size, which was three point oh two. I took my number, then I sent my math to the school system and they ran it through their formula and the response that I got was the numbers that I'd sent them were good for planning purposes.
They were way off years ago because they were way off.
They have...
We finally decided to take the number of houses and the number of school children.
Right.
And that's the number that you get is less than point seven.
Right. And they have updated their formula based on the facility study that was conducted. The consultant that did their enrollment projections gave them a formula to look at. So they looked, that's what they did. So I can't speak to whether, but all I can tell you is when I sent the information, they looked at it, ran their formula and said it was good for planning purposes. So, and I've provided you enrollment information for the schools based on their facility study for you to look at regarding the impact on schools at your seat.
I have a question for Mr. Potter, if I could. Mr. Potter, I know from our discussions, you have some feelings about who's going to live in your project and that relates to children also. Could you tell us how you've looked at it?
I see a market is like I shared with you that with the quote of that recent empty nester, but I also see this as a potential for a younger person, especially in those seven townhomes, that are young professional persons that have, you know, there are those occupations that you immediately cap out at your earnings as a pharmacist or someone of that sort. And I feel like we have a market for that younger person as well. Sure, there are going to be some that choose to raise children in here, but I don't think there's a large number of those persons. I don't feel like it reaches the average household that's in the remainder part of the county in terms of the subdivision. I could be completely wrong, but I feel pretty confident that, I feel like I know my customer pretty well.
Thank you.
What will come in? Mr. Potter is going to hook up to sewage system.
I have a question regarding that too, but go ahead.
And that's quite a capital outlay for the county and he's helping to reduce that burden.
That's right. When you get to the financial piece, if I can speak.
Please.
You know, we get into about three hundred, it is not about, it is today published sewer connections, eighty-one hundred dollars per residential connection. So you've got about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar connection fee in here. Granted, we have to do something with our household waste, but we all know that we can put in a, on a larger lot, we can put in a drain field at a much lesser cost, but it does give a tremendous amount of boost to the infrastructure. You also have to keep in mind with that sewer connection, I'm glad you brought this up, Mr. Walker, an average bill in Powhatan probably on sewer is about thirty dollars a month. So that with forty of those homes, we're creating about a fourteen thousand dollar annual income just for this one area, these forty homes.
I have a question along those lines on the sewer. You've offered a twenty-foot easement. Where are you proposing running the sewer lines? Obviously, the laterals from the homes through the streets all the way to where?
There are, along Route thirteen, there's an eight-inch main.
Okay, that's where you're planning?
So you have a manhole just past Yates Lane between Mabel's and Yates Lane, and then there's another manhole with connections just on the other side of Mabel's between that and the county administration building. So we've got plenty of opportunity there. And of course, Aqua Virginia has eight-inch water main that we brought to Scottville that we can tee off of for water capacity as well.
Okay, so once they install that to county satisfaction, that sewer system would be turned over to us, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Have you checked whether Aqua Virginia has the capacity?
I have. Keep in mind that Aqua Virginia is regulated by the State Corporation Commission and the Virginia Health Department. They will not let us have capacity that is not available. We have and we have not contributed as to date, we have a, I need to pull the lid, it's written on the back of the lid. I think it's fifty-three gallons, or conservatively, it may be fifty-six gallons in Scottville. And we have two parcels there for them, a well lot and a pump lot. So I think there's, if I'm stating off the cuff here, I think we have about a hundred and forty, Aqua Virginia has about a hundred and forty gallons per minute well capacity today, but I will be contributing from the Scottville piece of another fifty-three gallons. So, and Aqua may negotiate more capacity out of me with this project.
You know what that comes to, per household? And I'm asking this for your own protection too, because you know, we don't want to run short, so that's why I'm asking.
What was your question?
What's the volume per household in gallons per day?
I think the state figures on about a half a gallon of minutes, the way they figure it.
Usually two to four, it's four hundred gallons per day per household.
Yeah, but most of our bills that we see, like in Scottville, and I know our personal home, which we're hooked to Aqua here, we run about a hundred and twenty gallons a day. So the capacity's there, you know, Powhatan County is the largest consumer of the water and it goes to water in baseball and soccer fields, so.
So you feel comfortable that you answered that question for water capacity?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the nice thing of it is that liability is going to lay on me and Aqua Virginia and not the county of Powhatan.
And I understand, I'm just being concerned for you, actually, so. Put my utility hat on.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Potter, but I did have one other. When we, we have a procedure for proffer changes and how long it has to, the time from the time it's changed to the time we look at it? I just don't remember, remember something?
Proppers should be submitted two weeks prior, but it ultimately, it's really prior to the, state law talks about prior to the governing body. We have a policy to have it submitted two weeks prior to the planning commission and board, but state law really only speaks to it being submitted two weeks prior to the governing body's public hearing. So what you have this evening...
We made some changes, though.
You could make some changes, we could make some changes, because what really here, you're recommending, not approving proppers, you're recommending proppers to the board. So now, if you defer for thirty days, then we can make changes and bring those back if there's some that are necessary and then address the issues that Mr. Ayers brought up.
And you referenced the 2010 proffer policy. I'd like to know whether it, maybe it's not now, but if it's consistent, what's been offered with that policy?
Oh, the, those numbers, I took the calculation from that. So our current, our 2010 proffer policy, which was the last that the board has adopted, our proffer amount is thirteen thousand ninety-four dollars. Of that, schools is eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and the remaining comes out to that seventeen hundred dollars and change. And that was the last one. We're doing a recalculation of the proffer amount now to take to the board, but that hasn't been completed and as of yet, the board hasn't adopted it, so these are the numbers that we have to move forward with at this point.
Okay. So any other comments before I ask, but we have a limit, it's your district, Mr. Cox? Would you like to?
I would like to suggest a thirty-fay deferral so that we can resolve the procedural problems and I, like Mr. Ayers, have a little confused over the proppers, where we've got one set of numbers for children and maybe another set and no money profit for schools. That's something I'm just not comfortable with now, I need, I'd like to think about it a little bit more.
So we have a movement to defer. All that concur, approve, say aye?
Aye.
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 Ayes have it. But defer for thirty days. And if there's any other things we need to get taken care of in that timeframe so these folks don't have to come back, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know other rituals on the commission at the time, but there has been times where we didn't consider cash properties on the planning commission and let that up in the revenue. And this might be a time where we might consider that since they're in the process.
Understood.
And also, we've never entertained a rezoning residential that was on public utilities.
Yes, this is new. There's a lot of new things going on, a lot of new things.
So, you know, they are, this project is going to help the county with that capital investment.
Understood.
And I don't see a negative impact on the school system itself.
And that's why my question for, is it consistent with proffer policy beyond that point? I hear what you're saying. So if there's anything else we need to, any information we need for next meeting, that would be great to have.
And if you have any, anything that you need, let me know so we can address it before the next meeting.
Exactly. Thank you. All right, moving right along to...
May I ask?
Sure.
Would it be helpful, because here we are another thirty days and I know you have another case as well, in the next thirty days, very, something similar, much larger in scope. Granted, we have a track record with Scottville and we're familiar with these small lots, we understand how to grade and we know how to, you know, we know how this works here in Powhatan. I never thought I'd be the senior guy in the room, but I'm the senior guy in the room Would it be helpful for, I mean, I guess it would have to be advertised as such, but would it be helpful for us to have a small workshop to throw these pieces on the table and try to work this out versus us guinea pigging this again simply because it is new first all?
Understood.
And that being said, we can help, you know, I've got a, we all have a clock that continues to run and mine comes with a meter. Not that that's a great concern, but I really feel like we could be more successful for setting the course on this because it is so new. I'm willing to participate if y'all are willing to participate.
Yeah, I'll leave that to Mr. Altman, that's something that perhaps you want to put together and orchestrate, if that's something you feel like would be valuable, I certainly don't have a problem with.
What are your feelings, Mr. Ayers?
I think you and staff need to get together and work out the issues that we talked about and bring that to us, you know, as soon as you can between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
It's always good to sit down, I think it's probably a good idea if staff's willing to do that, you know, that helps make things work, then I certainly wouldn't stand in a way and appreciate the offer.
And I don't think any of us have any interest in making this a drawn out.
No.
No, I didn't, I didn't take...
No, 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 but I just wanted, no, you didn't intimate that, I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Right. I'm just trying to create a solution here and maybe we, you know, we did push this thing hard. We know, thank goodness, we had an incredible talent that helped us create this vision with Jeff Stodgill, and if you're not familiar with Mr. Stodgill, Jeff with PMA Architects out of Newport News, he was called upon by the county of Powhatan and designed the master plan for the village. And we use his services because he is so talented and he had that vision already for us and to help move that forward. So I guess we, you know, we left out a few adjectives and we'll be back in thirty days.
Sounds like we can work that out.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Are we ready to move to the next item? Mr. Altman, 1502, that's all yours.
You have this evening for your consideration, a zoning ordinance amendment to amend the industrial setbacks in section eighty-three dash two fifty C, which is the intensity and dimensional standards for the light industrial I-1 district in section eighty-three two sixty C, intensity and dimensional standards for the heavy industrial I-2 district of Article Four, Village Growth Area Districts of the zoning ordinance of the county of Powhatan. We discussed this at your April seventh workshop. Thank you for allowing us to have a public hearing this evening. I mean, we talked about having a workshop, but we kind of have a pending issue out there. Currently, as you know, the setbacks for front yards are seventy-five foot in the I-1 district, seventy-five foot on the front yard, side and rear at a hundred and fifty for essentially every zoning district except I, which is twenty-five foot. And then in the I-2 district, this front yard setback is also seventy-five foot, but the side and rear is three hundred foot with a budding, with a budding districts, which would be the I, is fifty. We've provided a couple of examples over time and in the staff report. The first example shows a setback on page forty-two of your packet in South Creek. The setback there is three hundred feet from the rear, in this case, it's a budding the high school. Then we have the fifty-foot side yard setbacks on either side because the properties adjoining it are both I-2. And then the seventy-five foot setback along the road. And then the smaller one on page forty-three is of Oak Bridge showing the hundred and fifty foot setback off the rear line, the twenty-five off the sides, and then a seventy-five. And actually, in this case, the setbacks pretty much overtake the entire parcel. So as we discussed before, there's an opportunity here to look at how we can amend it. We advertised twenty-five foot to allow the planning commission the maximum amount of flex, well, I shouldn't say that. We could have allowed, advertised zero, which would allow you the most flexibility possible to make any change in the spectrum from zero to one fifty or seventy-five, as it may be on the front. What we did was we advertised twenty-five feet to allow for the discussion this evening. Staff has recommended the front yard, front and side yards for fifty foot in both districts. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We've got the setback information from the other districts, other communities and then the maps that we showed in this evening. Additionally, we provided a fifty, seventy-five, and one hundred foot setback line on the illustrations to give you some idea just for scale perspective and when we're undertaking the discussion. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
I'm going to open up for public hearing first.
Certainly.
With that, I'd open up for public hearing. Anyone would like to speak to this zoning amendment, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing, it's open for discussion. And I know there's some people that have things to share, so. Whoever wants to go first, please.
I would. I continue to be kind of confounded when I just look at the numbers. I mean, fifty feet, thirty-five feet, twenty-five feet, they don't mean much to me, so I tried to turn them into something that meant something to me. And so, let me take you through this and tell you what's in front of you. I took a parcel, hypothetical parcel, it's two hundred and fifty feet on the front, four hundred feet on the side, that's ten thousand square feet, approximately two point three acres. feet, approximately two-point-three acres. That's, that, there's a lot of parcels in South Creek that fall into that. Okay, so that's, that was kind of where I came up with that. Take any number you want. I then took the Powhatan proposal, which is fifty feet all the way around. And when you look at the setbacks of the hundred thousand square feet, we have fifty-five thousand square feet in setbacks. So forty-five percent of the available property that's purchased is available for the building. And that didn't make much sense to me. I then did the same thing for Goachlin, which provides twenty thousand square feet setbacks. And I did the same thing for Chesterfield, which provides twenty-five thousand square feet setbacks. So I took the information...
So you're saying we're double practically, is that your point?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is an area that, if you go to, go look at the, at the chart. Now, let's go back to the Powhatan proposal, okay? The one that's right here is two and a quarter acres, two-point-three acres. If you doubled the size of this lot, okay, now it's five-hundred by eight-hundred, then the amount of setback goes down to fifteen, sixteen percent of the total. To some degree, the smaller, the smaller the parcel, the obvious thing is, the setbacks hit you harder. But as I looked at this, I said, first of all, it's not competitive with our neighbors. If we looked, if I was a developer, or an owner looking to put a piece of property here, an industrial piece, and I looked at just the land used between Powhatan and Goachlin, there's a compelling argument to go to Goachlin. There's a compelling argument to go to Chesterfield. And so it is, as you begin to work your way through these other districts. The other thing I did was I spent a fair amount of time, if anybody wants it, I'll send it to you. It's a nineteen sixty-nine William and Mary Law Review of setbacks, the history of them, where they came from, what, you know, why they exist. And in reality, I mean, it starts off as, it's a legal taking, is what it amounts. That's what setbacks are. Originally, and they go back to the eighteenth century, they had a lot to do with the health, potential health and safety of residents, giving them more air circulation. We had sewer systems and things that just didn't work at the level that they work today. As you come forward today, setbacks have really become more of an aesthetic issue than a safety issue. And that has to do with our building codes, our safety, and everything about us. And so I began to question, you know, why? Why fifty feet? What purpose does that serve for us? What purpose does it serve for the county? And so, in looking at this, I began to feel like that, first of all, fifty feet was just too much. It was not useful for the county, and it was not useful for companies that would potentially be coming here. Because it's light industrial, everything inside the box, to me, is the kind of business that I'd like to see in Powhatan County. And I'd like, quite frankly, like to see that building full of tools and full of people working the jobs, using as much of the space as possible, rather than having these large setbacks, which I don't think accomplish much, at least as I look at it. And so, that's kind of where I went through. I put on my development hat, and Mr. Altman has asked me, should he wear his? And I told him, I think he should always have it on. He needs to balance that with some other things, but he should always have his development hat on. So I would like to see, I'll toss that out to y'all. There's one other thing I would like you to look at, and that is in the recommended setback, okay, for light industrial that March gave you. There's a place in there that says, lot coverage maximum fifty percent. That needs to go away. Okay?
Well, it will, if we do your maths.
No, but I mean, I mean...
I was, I was going to bring that up as a way to...
Well, I see what you're saying.
...result in what we're talking about.
I get what you're saying.
I mean, that, what this, what this, what our, what our old ordinance says, which is fifty feet all the way around, and it's fifty percent, says, okay, we will allow tiny, small industrial operations in this county, period. And you're not going to get to use much of your land. And I don't think that's what we ought to do.
Well, let me ask this, too, if I can.
No, absolutely. I just, I wanted to get that out, and y'all react to it.
If we were to reduce it even, even further, we still have some flexibility in buffering, if there's a specific situation, if there's a problem, correct?
Yeah, we have buffer requirements in the code.
Right.
And I think what we have really is, we have existing parcels that the current setbacks become detrimental to the use of those existing parcels.
They can't expand.
They can't expand, or you can't use them at all. And I would, when I, when we did the South Creek piece, when we, when we did that, I sat back and wondered if, if the owner realized that he really couldn't use much of that parcel of land at all. Because my doubt, my guess is that Mr. Gallier doesn't think that he's limited to this little piece. The caveat here for us, and I think some of the benefit, you, I'm comfortable going lower, admittedly, I wasn't sure what the appetite of the community would be, going from one fifty, how far down, so I kind of put a brake on at fifty feet, saying that's maybe where we're comfortable.
But you advertised for twenty-five.
We advertised twenty-five, so we can go less. The good piece here is, when someone comes in to rezone a parcel in the future, regardless of what our setbacks are, at that point in time, we have the opportunity to look at what is surrounding it, to say, well, we have a school over here, and maybe over here, we need a little bit more of a setback or a buffer because of that, that site-specific item.
Exactly.
So that, I think that, that works in our favor, because right now, we're pretty much using the majority of our existing parcels, and they're, they're not large parcels. They're in small lot, small, I mean, really, in some instances, really small lot. Whereas a lot of industrial users want five, ten, or twenty acres, we don't have that type of product in the county right now. We have two, three, maybe four acre lots. I think there may be one five or six acre lot in South Creek. Now, you could put a couple of together, but it then becomes a long narrative. It's not going back into it, it's going along the road, and that is a little bit counter to some things. So I'm open to the discussion and where y'all want to go. The only comment, and I would, I, I'll have to bail a little bit, I have to, so the lot coverage maximum, I'm not sure that it, I would have, I don't know if it means this, or how much can the building take up? So...
I'm reading it to be, oh, I see what you're saying.
Is it building, and I have, I didn't look at the definition, and we probably define it.
Get rid of it, I don't know what it is.
And we'd have to do that in another public hearing, the definitions in the front or the back.
What is it?
If we have, if we have setbacks, why do we need another artificial dome? I mean, that's...
Lot coverage maximum. I think you're...
So the lot coverage means the percent of total lot area covered by all principal and accessory buildings.
Why do we want to...
So what that does is limits the side, the fifty percent of the, so we got a five-acre parcel, two and a half acres of that can be buildings.
Understood.
Exclusive of parking lots and BMPs, but we can only, so I, I don't know that that's quite as bad as we think, because I looked at Rapid, and what theirs would be, and they wouldn't be near fifty percent, when you look at the whole of their parcel. But I understand completely, and with my developer hat on, we probably, that complicates matters a little bit for people, and brings a new, well, what does this mean, into the equation, where if you just have your setbacks and your buffers, we're there.
You're there. What does it difference it make?
So...
The question is, why do you need another layer of restrictions?
Correct.
Yeah, very good question.
I agree with your point. And reaction to, to something less than fifty?
I understand it.
Huh?
I understand it.
Okay. You don't like it.
You're happy, though, right?
Yeah, no, no, you understand it.
And I agree that we need to make it as palatable as possible for people to develop industrial uses on the lots that are anticipated for industrial use. I'm a little bit concerned that, let me back up. I like the idea of minimizing the setback between like-kind uses. I'm not too happy with saying it's okay for an industrial use to be ten feet, you know, a setback of only ten feet from the property of a residential use, or maybe even a commercial use. But within a industrial zone, I think that's fine. Let's pack them in as tight as we can.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get to the same place. Is there a way to address Mr. Ayers' concerns, as far as that situation currently? Or does that have to be addressed separately?
Well, I think what we have is, you have in your ordinance, it says a budding, and it lists all the districts. So tell me if I'm wrong. We could probably break that out if you wanted to provide more of a buffer to R-five, or to whatever those districts may be, give it a little bit bigger of a number than, say, adjacent to commercial, or RC, or, well, I've even broken out RCC in the Commerce Center.
Which are the ones that bother, were you the most, well, or two?
What I'd like to consider, maybe, is, say, any yard would have to have a setback of this amount, or a depth of this amount, based on the adjoining zoning use. So whether it's a side yard, a backyard, a front yard, if it's next to an II, or an I-one, then it can be ten feet. If it's next to a, one of these residential or agricultural-based districts, then maybe it should be fifty feet. But that, that doesn't mean that all the way around, it has to be fifty feet. Only the piece of that that abuts the use that's incompatible, or less compatible.
I just don't think we're going to be able, I understand your concerns, okay? I just don't think that we're going to be able to sit down and put a table together that will address all of the situations that are going to pop up. And that the difference, okay? And that the difference between twenty-five feet and fifty feet of vacant space is much, changes much to the adjoining property, quite frankly. You know, I look at our zoning, and we got stuff just, I mean, it's all over the place. You knew that better than I. In a sense, you can look at some of the areas and say, wow, this is almost like Houston. Houston with no zoning, where it just rambles from one thing to the other, and we're not that bad. I would like to see something very simple.
If you look at the buffers we require from industrial use, single-family, it's already a C buffer, which is sixty-five feet wide.
That's, yes, that's the question I was asking.
So that would, setback is less buffer than...
Yeah, and that was my original comment, was, is there enough buffering capability to address Mr. Ayers' concern? If there is, you know, let's, I'm in favor of taking twenty-five, I'll just say. With the buffering capability to twenty-five, we advertised.
And you says, how much buffer between zones?
Right now, industrial use, adjoining, single-family is a C buffer, which is sixty-five feet. If it's adjoining a commercial or mixed use, it's a B, which is forty feet.
That's what you were talking about.
So that's sixty-five feet for commercial, which is...
Right. And can those buffers be reduced by a more intensive planting, or is that, they can go to half of that size by more intensive, right?
Sixty-five, it goes to thirty if you plant a bunch of trees.
Oh, more than half.
But then you still have the fifty-foot buffer.
And a solid fence or wall, at least six feet tall.
Okay. Is that satisfied, you know, the question, is that satisfactory?
And I, and I think, trying to go off of memory of our industrial properties, the majority of them butt up against A-ten.
Right now, probably.
Right now, Rapid has a mixture, there's a commercial piece, some RC, an A-ten. Oak Bridge backs up against A-ten, but it has some commercial out on the, on sixty, the majority of which is, is owned by one group. South Creek, I think to the north, is A-ten, and then commercial. And, but in that rezoning, they, they proffered along the commercial side, on the south side, and along the school, they could only put in I-one uses, not I-two uses, because that's all I-two, with the exception of that side, which is a proffer. And then we have Jefferson, which is ag around it, but it's pretty much built out. I think there's maybe one, one lot in Jefferson left, if I remember. So a lot of them are around the A-two, not really are. So, and like I said, in the future, if we had one coming on R, then you have the ability, as part of that, to consider what's around it in the rezoning. And quite frankly, I think what we're going to find is, our comp plan is talking about that, you know, and most times, you want that transition, ag, residential, and maybe multifamily, or we get into our VRs, our, our VCs, and then our CC, and then we get into industrial and that transition. So, but I think we have the buffer piece in there that could certainly protect us. We're, I'm comfortable with what direction you want to go. Like I said, my, my comfort level, I just wasn't sure where, where the community would want to be, because that's a hundred-foot drop. But I don't disagree that a lesser setback would be helpful in the development of some of these parcels, particularly when we get to apply that current setback and see that you can't use the parcel. So, and I don't think that was really the intent, but...
Make a movement?
With pleasure.
I agree, and we certainly don't want to make these lots unusable by our buffer and setback combination.
Right.
If the setbacks can be altered, and the buffers can maintain the, the separation between non-compatible or unlike uses, then, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yep. I don't know if you want to go to what was advertised, the twenty-five, with the, you know, the buffering takes up the concern, because we, we can go as low as twenty-five.
Right.
Because that's what was advertised.
I'm very comfortable with twenty-five.
Why don't you go ahead, why don't you make a movement to...
Okay, I'd like to move that ordinance fifteen oh two dash AZ be amended, so that the front, side, and rear setbacks are twenty-five feet.
Would that be for both I-one and I-two?
Yes. I make this motion based upon public access, convenience, general welfare, good zoning, and good zoning practice.
All in favor, say aye.
Could I discuss this motion first?
Yes, sir, and I'm sorry. Thank you. Just a little bit on the format here. The table, section eighty-three two fifty, that was drafted, this is page forty-six of our packet. I don't see the RR district listed at all in this table.
Well, I took the table directly from the zoning ordinance, so if we're not...
Perhaps that's an error in the zoning ordinance we need to fix.
Yeah, well, we, well, when we did the districts, we weren't going to have RR.
And yet we do.
And yet we do. So that's, that would account for that. We, that was, because I think you adopted all of the village growth areas before we got into the discussion of the ag district, which was at the tail end, and we added RR. So that is, yeah, we need to add RR in.
RR to this table. Now, the other question I have is, why do we need to separate RCC or CC from the ones that are ab... that are above there? If the distance is going to be the same.
Right. And what I had, what I was thinking initially was, because of the commercial nature, it would give you the opportunity to make that one lower than some of these that have a residential component.
Effectively, now it doesn't have to, though, right?
Right. If you're just going straight to all of them, we'll combine it all back in. What we'll do is, we'll add the CC in the list, but my thought was to provide some flexibility, like, if you had concern about ag and residential, you could break those out with a different setback and then have that commercial piece, which is naturally abutting that light industrial as a separate, a larger, or smaller setback.
Right.
So that was the thought process.
But in this case, if it's all going to be twenty-five, then it would just be one number.
We, actually, we don't even really need to list the districts. We'll just have side yard setback and rear yard setback at twenty-five feet.
At twenty-five feet, okay. Great.
Good catch. Anything else?
Is that okay with your motion?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I think it changed it, just cleans it up.
Absolutely, that's perfect. It makes it, cleans it up.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Now, we have a motion to the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
As have it. Moving to the lot coverage maximum, can we put that on the list of things to get rid of for the next meeting?
Well, what I was going to suggest is part of our...
Or the board can do that.
Well, we'd have to advertise it with the board to do it. We can...
But we'd have to still run it through here.
Yeah, we'd have to run it through here first.
Okay.
What, so not to belabor the workshop portion of the meeting, private roads, Ms. Carmack isn't here.
Oh, before we leave this...
We haven't closed the...
Okay.
Yeah, I have another question or a statement on these overheads or the figures that you provided?
Yes.
The title of all of them says setback buffer.
Right, that was...
And if you could eliminate the word buffer from those titles before it goes to the board supervisors, I think that would be a real good idea.
Yeah, that was a comment that I've made to our GIS guy who put it together and it didn't make it, so, yeah.
Yes, because that just...
That confuses things.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else before we, other items? We have no other business, and that's something else.
Are there, is there anything on Route sixty corridor study?
Well, we're going to do the workshop.
Oh, okay, we're going to the workshop, okay, sorry.
Ms. Carmack isn't here to discuss private road pieces.
Meeting is now closed. We go into workshop.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit in A-ten, so what we found is, as we said all along, we would find these little pieces in the zoning ordinance that we would need to fix along the way. So what we found is, we allow an accessory dwelling unit in A-ten by right, up to fifty percent of the main structure, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. But that then refers you to the U standards, and in U standards, it says thirty-five feet, thirty-five percent, not fifty percent. So we've got this...
We talked about this before.
They took accessory dwelling definitions and U standards and copied it down into accessory dwelling unit, accessory park. Accessory dwelling unit, and just changed the wording, but they left the party.
Changed the title but left the definition the same. So that's something, and we have, we found that in the RC district, which is our rural, our residential, commercial district, somehow we don't allow residential at all. We, that's not a use, it's a conditional use, not a permitted use anymore. Now, that may have been purposeful, so it's one of these things that we've come along, and now we have the lot coverage piece. So the question is, do you want to see these one at a time, or would you like for us to bring you a group of corrections together?
A group of corrections.
Love a laundry list.
Okay. That, that's, because we're, as we're finding them, we're kind of taking notes, and what we can do is just have one meeting where we just blitz you guys, we'll say, here's the housekeeping night.
We talked about it before, and I think that's where y'all want to go.
Okay, perfect.
But I'd like, I'd like to move them, okay? I don't want to wait a year, accumulate for a year.
No, 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 I don't want to do that either. I'm hoping at some point in time we stop finding things, and maybe just, we just have to stop looking.
That'll be the time, that'll be the time when we start rewriting it.
No, 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 no.
Have it sitting here too long, we find something.
No.
Mr. Kover will find it for us.
He can rewrite it. He can be in charge of it. Talked about the subdivision ordinance where we were. With Route sixty, I met with VDOT as I talked to y'all. Then met their on-call, they're supposed to be, they were supposed to get me a proposal for filling in some of the gaps of what we wanted versus what VDOT would allow us to do under the transportation dollars. I haven't gotten that yet. I was supposed to get it this, last week, I didn't get it, but I'm expecting it from them. As soon as I get it, I'll let y'all know what that cost would be. I'm thinking that here we are, we're getting towards the end of the budget year, we haven't utilized all of our money on our own call service line item, and that we should be able to be able to get that taken care of. So just wanted to give you an update. I haven't gotten what I thought I was going to get, but I did get an email at the end of, not last week, but the week before, that said, I'll have it to you next week, and I didn't get it, but I just wanted to keep y'all in the loop as to where we were with that, so you didn't have any questions. But, and that's all I have for y'all this evening. You got anything for me?
Anything else? Before we adjourn.
So adjourn. So adjourn.
So adjourn.
So adjourn.
So adjourn.
Done by Kevin.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want to, your bed, didn't have that little handgun, take those two guys there, you have to worry about people.
I don't see that.
I haven't seen news.
Richard.
It doesn't matter, but I think these figures are actually worse than we thought.
Okay, so we can reset your password?
Thirty, twenty-seven, sixty-five, these two would be three-five, seven-three-hundred.
Okay, that'll be, we can do that.
Bring this one up to twenty-eight, fifty.